The time has come and passed for the regular August the 6th, 2018 council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Item B, invocation by Pastor Paul Young from Salem Seventh Day Adventist Church located 1105 Pine Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Pastor, come to the podium. Ladies, right after the invocation, I'm gonna ask you all to stand. You're gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, alright? All stand please.
Our beloved Father, Creator of heaven and earth, the sea and all that is in them, I thank you for the opportunity to address you before this honorable assembly, to ask that your presence be in the midst of this meeting, to direct the hearts and minds of our leaders as they listen and deliberate and make decisions on behalf of the residents of this community. Grant wisdom to our leaders as they wrestle with the challenges of the day. I pray for elected officials of this city, strengthen them to lead with courage and conviction. I ask that you cover their families and may their homes be examples to our community. Be with our first responders, Lord. Get them home safely to their families each day as they put their lives on the line to make us safe. Be with us as residents. May we dwell with each other in peace and show our children what it means to love you with all our heart and to love our neighbor as ourselves. Finally, Lord, we ask that you would remember our leaders of this country. Lord God, you have put them in authority and we are reminded that we wrestle not against flesh and blood but against principalities and powers. So we ask for God that you would give them wisdom and understanding. May they all govern with justice and truth without neglecting mercy to those who are less fortunate. Now again, I ask that you would be in the midst of this place as well as in the midst of our hearts. In Jesus' name, amen.
And allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
Item C, mayor's comments. Again, welcome and thank everyone for coming and being here with us today. I think this was mentioned earlier, applications are now available. In the fire department, it is, is hiring. Everyone, if you know any, any good men or young lady, please stop by the clerk's office or check out the website, check out the city's website to get an application. Chief Bridges has done a fantastic job getting word out to the community. He was awesome on Real Talk with Mr. Brandon Ewing. The police department will start taking applications soon. Chief Wallace has had some big expectation for a number of applications. So once again, if you know any young man and young lady, please pick up an application for the fire department at this time. The police department application process will be starting shortly. As you may, as many of you may have noticed, the city posted signs at the corners of Green Bay and 120, Green Bay and Washington, Green Bay and Grand, Sunset and Lewis, and they read, "Due to the public safety concerns, panhandling is discouraged. Please donate to local charitable organization." We have been looking for ways to address the issue of panhandling in our community while also protecting taxpayers. Since there are First Amendment right issues here which limit what we can do, this is just one step in addressing these issues, but I think it's a good start. Huge congratulations to Deputy Clerk David Patterson. Dave, wave your hand. Deputy Clerk, Mr. Patterson, who was recently sworn in as the Vice President of the Municipal Clerks of Lake County. Congratulations again, Mr. Patterson. I had a great time at Explore Lake Michigan Water Trail Canoe Kayak Launch Official Opening last Friday. That was, that was excellent and the Captain Knight off, Waukegan Knight out, touched a truck was a big hit for the little kids. I think we had every child in Waukegan hitting the horns on all the trucks. Oh, I went out on a canoe, everybody.
I saw a picture.
No, you should've saw my face on the table. I was so scared. The water, I was afraid. But thank you, David Motley, for getting me through that little process. And Jane, thank you very much. Upcoming events, summer concerts. The last Waukegan Band Concert of the 2018 season is tomorrow. Tomorrow night at 7:30 PM at Steiner Pavilion. Tuesday night concerts will continue for the following three weeks, featuring Jazz Wave on the 14th of August, Waukegan High School Marting Band on the 21st of August, in the Illinois Brass Band on the 28th. All concerts are free, so bring a long chair and enjoy. Genesee Theater. The last of the Genesee Theater Summer Movies, Music and Meals will be Dreamgirls. Anybody remember Dreamgirls? Ah, yeah, all the ladies remember Dreamgirls. With catering, oh, this is good, with catering by Hillary's Barbecue. Y'all don't say that when y'all come to council meeting. Alright, okay, this is Thursday, August 9th. Tickets are available online. Blues on the Water. Two-day Blues on the Water Festival is this weekend, August 11th and 12th, at the Harvest Edge. Enjoy good music, good food, and good views. Chamber of Commerce. Join Heart of the City and Waukegan Chamber of Commerce for a grand opening in Business After Hours on Thursday, August 16th, at Heart of the City's new headquarters located 114 South Genesee Street, Suite 303. All business are welcome. Owners and managers are welcome to bring their business cards. Waukegan Public Library. Selena, did I see you again? Hey, our executive director? Stand up, Selena, they have to see you. You got a full house. Hey. The Waukegan Public Library Summer Programming includes free Friday concerts at noon through the end of August and free fun family movies on Sunday afternoon. Check out their calendar for more information, activities. Art Walk. Art Walk. Art Walk and the Sixth Annual Shred Fest will be Saturday, August 18th, in downtown Waukegan Arts and Entertainment Districts. All invited and welcome. As always, check out waukeganil.gov and hashtag #ExploreWaukegan for more events and activities. A small presentation. I have spoken, spoken many times about our vision for Waukegan to become a recreation destination for Lake County. So I'm excited to invite some speakers up to inform us about a great upcoming event for our city, Waukegan Music Fest. George and Jesse, are you here? Come on up to the podium.
Good evening. How are you, Mr. Mayor, Council? George, you are here. Reside in Chicago, Illinois. Do a lot of major festivals in Chicago. Notably, one that's actually coming up this weekend, which is the Cuban Festival on Reese Park. Been doing events and festivals for about 14 years. So it was actually pretty interesting to me that when Jesse approached me about doing something great in Waukegan last year, I thought it was a great opportunity to jump on top of that. And met with Jesse and a couple of folks and a couple of folks from the mayor's office and we put together a plan for a music festival in downtown Waukegan. We pretty much put together a diverse lineup considering the diversity of Waukegan. A lot of folks, we've done some advertising here. We have a website called waukeganfest.com. I encourage people to visit that. The first year, we're really trying to get people on board to what we're trying to do here and that's make Waukegan a destination, a music town. Kind of like the stuff we do in Chicago, we're trying to bring that to the forefront here in Waukegan. And we are expecting a full carnival operation here. It's a free event, first of all. We have a full carnival on display, vendors, car show, live music on stage, and car exhibits. We actually got some ideas, some great feedback from the folks that were at Scoop Fest. So we're looking to incorporate some of the stuff we do in Chicago here in Waukegan.
Just real quick, the location, just sort of wants clear. Where's the location?
We're gonna be right on Genesee Street from Gradden Avenue to Washington. We're looking to use those blocks. This year is a year of gauging for us to see how the community responds to that. And we're trying to encourage everyone within that business district to also participate in the festival as well.
Alright, and you guys are going to, I think, have a little 101 with the business community in those areas, kind of give them some of the expectations.
Right, yeah, we have. We have visited the strip and around town. We've been knocking on doors, trying to get people to sign up. But it's like everything, first year, people are skeptical. And it's kind of like you gotta show them, you know, before they kind of get on board. And we get it. I have been doing festivals a long time, it's always a challenge the first year, but I'm pretty confident people are gonna be proud of what we're gonna bring here. And, you know, we'll continue to knock on doors for the next couple of weeks until the event and hopefully we get some people on board, so we'll continue to do that.
Alright. Any questions, Alderman?
You're Alderman Valco. Sir, when you keep saying a carnival.
Sure.
You talking about a carnival carnival with rides? Or you're talking about a carnival atmosphere?
No, well, there's, I have a map and you'll see it on the Waukegan Fest site. We have a carnival where there is rides, right? Teenage rides, rides for kids, carnival games. So it's a full-scale carnival.
The reason I bring it up, sir, is I know the last time there was a carnival at Belvedere and Lewis, last month, six weeks ago, we had major problems down on the south side. So I don't know if it was Alderman Moseo or somebody down on that end said maybe we should just have a moratorium on carnivals. So I don't know if anybody's had that discussion off of the council floor or what. So I'll just bring that up. So the mention was made after the last one, so.
Yeah, and I know they've been working with the, with outdoor, especially events, with all the police, fire, public works and all those things. They're working through all of those questions that we have right now. But I, I think I want to be clear, the focus is gonna be on the music aspects of it.
Correct.
Just like we did with Scoop, where we had kind of the kids, kind of carnival, a little something for those younger kids to participate in. That was the goal for, if I'm not mistaken, for, for their carnival aspects.
Yeah, again, it's the Waukegan Music Fest and that is the focus. It's to bring great entertainment to the city of Waukegan. Carnival is always a bonus thing because, you know, kids love carnivals, right? And we, I've been working personally with the same carnival company for 14 years and we just have a great rapport together. And I can tell you that all our security that's gonna be used for this event is actually CPD. This actually be working with Waukegan's Police Department and Lieutenant Beach. So we are bringing the best of the best of what we do in Chicago to Waukegan to make sure that, number one, it's a safe event, that it's friendly and that people just have a good time without having to worry about any gang issues or any types of problems that are gonna be happening. It's a free event, but we will have a strong security checkpoint. Thank God I have a perfect record in the city of Chicago. I've never had not one single issue. And that's because of the residents and the people and the partners that we have in place. So I feel really confident in what we're doing here and we have a great plan and I'd be happy to share that plan with anyone here.
Any other questions?
Just so you know, in public safety, I'll get to it right now. We have a special curfew that day, for the music fest.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So hopefully that will help mitigate any trouble that, you know.
Yeah, the curfew that Alderman Moseo is speaking of is right now, is it 7 o'clock, Chief?
No, no.
6 o'clock.
I can read it right here, Your Honor. It says persons less than 16 years old, they have to be out of the, by 9 o'clock, unaccompanied. So if a 16-year-old without an adult, they have to go. And then anybody from 16 to 18, it goes up to 10 o'clock, of course, unaccompanied. So in those age groups, they have to be accompanied by an adult or they have to leave.
Yeah, and this be clear, we're, this is being implemented as our new process, not just for you. It's gonna apply Scoop next year to any other event that we have where the public is gonna... And I think young men and young ladies at the certain hour. I get back to when I was a kid, you know? When the lights go out, you're supposed to be in. And that's kind of the concept that we're going to right now. And it works, let's be honest, it works. That concept works. So, but thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, George, Jesse. Look forward to, I expect this is gonna be great because you're working with our team here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I encourage Q and F this weekend. I invite the council and everyone in the city of Waukegan to come out as my guest. You can see firsthand the operation that we provide over there. So be happy to have you guys come out. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Item two, minute, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Valco, to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 16th, 2018. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Item three, Madam Clerk.
I have Margaret Carrasco, three minutes.
Good.
I hope all members of the committee come forth. Enrique, Janet, Retana. Okay, just in case you missed it, just kind of a follow-up. A week ago, we had an event at the Yacht Club after we sent our P to over 300 different halls, establishments in Lake County and our selection was Waukegan Yacht Club. Because after review, that was, they were so polite, respectful, and welcoming to our Latino community. Need I say, the event was a huge success. Outside, outdoor, and the yachts that came down, it was just fabulous. Which brings us up to our next upcoming outdoor events. And the sheet I just gave you is just a synopsis. On May 2nd, we submitted several applications for our next events. Dates being August 26th, our upcoming Beauty Pageant Gala. September 7th through 9th, Tackles and Rock, Glow Night, The Colors Run, Volleyball Soccer Martial Arts Tournament, Fiesta de Patricios Queen Pageant Grand Finale. September 14th through 16th, our Latino Bash Festival, Grito. And on September 16th, our annual mega Waukegan Fiesta de Patricios Parade and then the after-party, all events in Waukegan at Steiner Pavilion. So upon review of the agenda tonight, I noticed that our outdoor event applications are not listed. Again, so I want to just make some recommendations, suggestions. Well, first of all, I just would like to say that at our events, upcoming events, the parade, we expect over 100,000 people. We will have that many people there because the key is that it is organized by Waukegan residents, Waukegan youth, Waukegan business owners. And that's the key to having successful events in our community. Next, all the vendors, etc., are, as I mentioned, are Waukegan. The money stays in Waukegan. The money goes to our Waukegan to support our Waukegan businesses. Our recommendations, just to expedite and improve the process, is that we ask that no one else have to go through what we did and be in this scenario, that there be a timeline. May 2nd, we submitted the application, maybe a one-week process, to let an organization know the status or meet with them and whatever recommendations. Next, we recommend, highly recommend, that all the requirements, each and every requirement, be in writing together with the application so that you know.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco.
Thank you very much. Next would be our Queen Pageant.
Good evening, my name is Galilea Mendoza and I am one of three coordinators of this year's pageant, Reina Fiesta de Patricios Waukegan 2018. Our goal as coordinators of this pageant is to motivate young women to take action in their community and to be able to take, to take part in their community and also go with their confidence, mature, and become future leaders of our community. I would also like to take a moment and thank our mayor, Sam Cunningham, for attending one of our events which was taking place at the Yacht Club, July 29th. Also want to take advantage of being here and invite each one of you to our next event at the Steiner Pavilion, like mentioned by Margaret, August 26th at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maribel Mendoza. Soy coordinadora del certamen de belleza junto con mis compañeros Galilea Mendoza y Emmanuel Bravo. Dimos inicio a este certamen hace algunos meses buscando encontrar en la juventud mujeres jóvenes que fueran dignas de representar el estado que vio nacer a sus padres y también algunas de nuestras participantes. Nuestro objetivo como coordinadores de este certamen es motivar a mujeres de nuestra comunidad a que sean parte de un proyecto al cual les ayuda a crecer y desarrollar más confianza en sí mismas y con ello llegar a ser líderes de nuestra comunidad. Me gustaría tomar un momento para agradecer a nuestro alcalde, Sam Cunningham, por su presencia en nuestro evento llevado a cabo el pasado julio 29 en el Yacht Club. Quiero tomar ventaja de esta oportunidad para invitar a cada uno de ustedes y a nuestra comunidad en general a nuestro próximo evento el día 26 de agosto a las 3 de la tarde en el pavilion de la playa de Waukegan.
Good evening, my name is Ana Barbara Samarrón. I'm 20 years old.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Ponson, I'm 18 years old.
Good evening, my name is Destiny Alvarez and I am 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Flores and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Aureli Cantu and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Angie Luna and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Emily Rodriguez and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Marisol Rojas and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Alyssa Rodriguez and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Buenrostro and I'm 19 years old.
Good evening, my name is Prisa Ramirez and I'm 18 years old.
Good evening, my name is Maria Lopez and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Yahira Vargas and I am 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Kay Vieira and I'm 18 years old.
Good evening, my name is Crystal Alvarez and I'm 17 years old.
Good evening, my name is Jasmine Puentes and I am 19 years old.
Good evening, my name is Andreyna Bañales and I'm 20 years old. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Queens. Next, I have Judith Marquez.
Good evening, my name is Judith Marquez and first of all, I wasn't aware that I was gonna speak, so I have nothing prepared. But I just want to say that I am a owner for a women's clothing store that is located in Waukegan at the Hobo Plaza, right next door to the Dollar Tree, which is Time for Fashion. Time for Fashion is a women's clothing store. We go from, we're very known for our jeans, which are very stretchy. We're also known for girdles. And we are now known for our gala dresses. My goal as a co-owner of a small business in Waukegan is to work with the lovely ladies in the high school. As a single mom, I wasted a lot of money on prom dresses, homecoming. And it went from dress to shoes to jewelry, makeup. So now that I'm a owner, I would like to offer all of our dresses to all the girls in the schools at a reasonable price. And also to the moms and to anyone who's interested. We also have girdles for men, not only for women. So all the men are welcome to go and stand by and check it out. I also want to say, I'm just saying, it's not only the women.
I pulled my shirt up, I don't need to know.
I also want to say that on August, I mean, July 29th, all of our pageants here, which are, there's a total of 25, I am honored and blessed to be the official sponsor. So the outfit that they wore for the boat was sponsored by us, Time for Fashion, and also a cocktail dress. And we will also be sponsoring all of their dresses going forward, especially for the main events, which is August 26th, that will be at the lakefront. So therefore, I welcome all of you guys to attend and also I welcome you to our store. One more thing, behind this pageant, there is several of small businesses who have been working very hard to make all of our events bigger and better and safety for all of us. If it wasn't for them, I don't think we would be here right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Janet Ostrowski.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janet Ostrowski. I'm a transplant from New York. I'm a registered nurse. And my hope at some point is to open up a low-cost, nonprofit, holistic healing center for the residents of Waukegan and the residents of Lake County. And in trying to accomplish that, I think I would organize a block party on County Street where I lived for the last five years. And I'd like to propose that this be the first annual Heal the World Block Party for North County Street, okay? Everyone is invited, not just the residents of County Street. Unfortunately, I tried to get David Villa Lobos this information tonight and I couldn't reach him today. And I've had some personal issues that I've had to take care of, so it was a little bit of conflict of interest. But I would like to ask the permission of the folks on the dais to allow us to have this block party on September 1. I did have it on the weekend of the music festival, but I realized late in the game that I needed to push it back a week in hopes that all of you could attend, because I'm sure you want to attend the event that's on Jassy Street, okay? So if it's okay with all of you, I would like to propose a block party on September 1 and all of you are invited.
We'll get it to the right hands. There, that's the right hands, right there. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your attention.
Thank you.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolish, 80, Calister Avenue. You know, this very hall that we're sitting in right here, Mayor, I helped to construct this. We had to, we had to bring in concrete by wheelbears here. And this is a union construction work. I helped to construct Kennedy King College in Chicago. I worked in the construction area here for over 25 years. Only difference between working here and working at Kennedy King in Chicago, when I go into that, when you go into that community, I had to have a family member who lived in that area before I could work there. So I'm saying, when I hear about the contract that was given and awarded to Peter Baker or any other contractors in this area that do not first look out for the best interests of your citizens here, that is a problem. That's a problem. And all I'm saying is that we got young people here who need these jobs and it is our responsibility as a community, I look, as a, as a union construction worker, I don't have a... I don't have a problem as an international union construction worker. Your card say you can work anywhere. I get that, okay? But also in that international card, you also have the ability to look out for your citizens first. Anybody else coming from Chicago or wherever else, they get consideration after your citizens here. So when I hear that that 30%, what we're looking for as residential requirement or for our citizens being removed, then between that and mob action charges on our children while they're in high school, that is a lethal combination. We cannot put situations here where we are not looking out for the best interests of our children first. And I'm speaking from the fact that it was the kind of work, you know, people work at Walmart, I get that. But $40 an hour job is the kind of job that take young men is from the street slinging drugs to being a single full-time dad like myself who raised my daughters on the south side of Wakegan. That is the kind of money that makes a man, that appeal to them and say, hey, I could do something better. We, as a community, we have to do better to make sure our citizens here get the same opportunity as those coming from Chicago. So when we remove things like that and we do not look out for our home citizens first, we're asking for trouble. When we're looking at the crime, the rate of crime in our community, and we do not put something in place, a safeguard, to make sure our young people get jobs first, that's a problem. We got youth construction training programs.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Thank you.
So we gotta do better than that.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes your audience time.
Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozio, to approve proclamation declaring 2018 Year of the Bird. Madam Clerk?
2018 is the Year of the Bird, whereas Wakegan is home to a wealth of man-made and natural resources. And whereas Wakegan's lakefront parks and natural spaces are amazing and vital ecosystems where the delicate balance depends on the diversity of plants and animals. And whereas one of the most important residents calling these areas home is our community of various species of birds. And whereas, birds remind us that nature is all around us. Birds exist in every environment, both urban and rural, from coastal shoreline to wetlands, grasslands, and forests. And whereas, over 300 species of birds are recorded in Lake County, Illinois, and 292 of these species migrate through breed or are year-long residents of the Wakegan area, putting Wakegan in second place on the e-bird birding hotspot list for Lake County. And whereas, the federally endangered piping plover, state of Illinois endangered common tern, and the threatened least-bittered nest on the freshwater coastline of Wakegan. The state-endangered short-eared owl, American battern, northern harrier, and black-crowned night heron are regularly sighted at Wakegan Beach. And whereas, Wakegan is an important link in the extraordinary Great Lakes migration route and has a critical role in providing food and habitat for migratory birds that know no international boundaries. And whereas, the eastern meadow lock, sadren, and American kestrel, all listed by the Bird Conservation Network as birds of concern, breed or are regularly sighted in the grassland areas of Wakegan. And whereas, Wakegan's Bone Park, where the red-headed woodpecker now breeds, is a site of an environmental learning center and is an example that the people of Wakegan are committed to birds and nature. Whereas, 2018 is the centennial year of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which protects birds like the northern cardinal, blue jay, and black-capped chickadee, which live in the backyards, parks, and neighborhoods of Wakegan. And whereas, birding activities like the snowy owl sightings bring people to Wakegan throughout the year that helps to boost the economy through tourism. It are an example that where birds thrive, people prosper. And now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Wakegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim 2018 as the Year of the Bird, adopted the 6th day of August, 2018.
Good evening. My name is Emma England. I'm president of Lake County Audubon Society. Lake County Audubon Society is delighted that Mayor Cunningham and the City Council of Wakegan proclaim that 2018 is the Year of the Bird. The passing of this proclamation will help increase public awareness of the need to protect bird species and their habitat. And Wakegan can be very proud that they are the first city in Illinois to proclaim 2018 as the Year of the Bird. The special habitat of the Wakegan Lakefront is a birding hotspot in Lake County that attracts many local and out-of-state birders, and it's one of my personal favorite locations to bird. For the last two years, I have helped to monitor the endangered birds nesting on Wakegan Beach. And Lake County Audubon Society would like to thank the city of Wakegan for its terrific support in helping to protect the common tern and piping plover. Lake County Audubon Society is excited to work with the city of Wakegan to help protect the birds and the rare plants of the remarkable Dunes ecosystem and to enhance the Wakegan Lakefront area for birds, birders, and beachgoers. And finally, I would like to thank David Mockley and Jane Ferry, in particular Diane Rosenberg from my board, and other people from my board who are supporting me in this proclamation. Thank you.
You always go to the middle over here, do the presentation. I have the center on your right, so we can get the city of Wakegan to take the picture. Come on up, bird members. We are board bird members. Board members? How the ladies sound real something, real quick? There you go. You know, now, for me, where nesting is at on our beach. You know, when I was a kid growing up, and I think we didn't have that, that much for nesting. So as I got older and it came up, I was like, man, what is, what are all of these? I'm gonna say this, so don't get upset. All these weeds doing right now here. When I became an Alderman, I said, can't we just cut them? Wow, the next part is something. And you can. Now, as I matured to my leadership position, I used to get out, get from a lot, how they would come to the city of Wakegan early in the morning and watch birds at our beach. All as far as Northbrook, Glenview, oh, come down to the city of Wakegan. And then obviously Jane and David was telling me how this group took upon themselves to really watch this area on our beach. What did I say? Let's make this the destination spot. Not, ah, we said, let's make this the destination spot within our city, for Lake County. So thank you, giving your time, your energy, and your passion for this. More importantly, educating our public. And we are now the first, the first city in the state of Illinois. Let's give it up again. I, myself, along with the city council, and the entire council proclaim this day for you. And we appreciate you and thank you for what you do for our community. This is the first Alderman I know, can you all take a picture with? This is, we are the first one. You gotta have some history over here. And since we have new son, Tribune Company, this will be good for the front page. She's looking at you. I'm trying. You ready? All right, there we go.
I can't see that no lady broke glasses on. There you go.
Yeah?
Janet's picture is secondary. You're all looking this way. There you go.
All right, there it is.
I have a baby really good. Okay, one, two, three, ready, go. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Awesome. All right.
Okay, I got my Queens mixed up. There's some other Queens here to be introduced during audience time, and they are the Wakegan Queens from 2017 and 2018. And I think we'll know you by your hardware.
Thank you.
Oh, there's my little ladies.
Good evening. I first of all, I'd like to thank Alderman Villalobos for attending and inviting us tonight to present our 2018 Wakegan Queens to the City Council. I am Jody Breyzinger, and my sister is Kelly Lichtenberger. We are the directors for the Miss Wakegan Pageant, which was held this past Saturday on August 4th at Bowen Park. Our program is not a beauty pageant. We do not judge the girls by their looks or their body shape. Our judges are instructed to look for a total package. The girls are judged on communication skills, in personal interview, public speaking skills during a short onstage speech. And they also answer a surprise question, like a pop question, onstage. They're also looking for a girl they feel will best represent Wakegan by looking at the depth of her character and confidence as she enters a room. We had 13 young ladies compete for the titles of Little, Junior, Teen, and Miss Wakegan. I'm happy to say I would have been proud to have any of those young ladies become your next Queens. Tonight, we have some, a princess, where's my princess, Janet? In attendance as well. We strive to recognize all the participants in the pageant and invite our princesses to various events and to attend our princess program at no cost. It is, the princess program is a bit like a finishing school. So the girls attend once a month activities relating to manners, etiquette, and presenting themselves in public. We offer social events for the girls to practice these skills in the form of theater outings, tea parties, volunteer service alongside their Queens. Tonight, we have Jaslyn Torres, who was named First Princess to our Little Miss Queen. So thank you for coming, Jaslyn. Before I introduce the new Queens, I would like to invite you to thank your 2017 Queens for their year of service to Wakegan. Miss Angie Luna, our team of Joslyn Soto, our junior Ellison Mallory, and our Little Miss Amaris Early could not be here tonight, but they serve Wakegan with grace and beauty all year. And I think Angie wanted to say something real quick.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angie Luna. I'm former Miss Wakegan 2017. It was a pleasure volunteering my community with my sister Queens. I'm here because we crowned four new Queens this past Saturday, and it was an honor. And I want them to present themselves to you all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joslyn Soto, former Miss Wakegan 2017. Over the past year, we have done multiple community service events around Wakegan. We have volunteered at the park district, local school, and city health events. My sister Queens and I want to say thank you for your support and ask if there are any events that the city holds, please let our new Queens and director know so that they can come to the new events and be involved. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Orelli Cantu, and I'm your 2018 Miss Wakegan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maritza Escamia, Junior Miss Wakegan 2018.
Hi, I'm Honor Alexis Garcia Montoya. I'm Teen Miss Wakegan 2017.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Smith. I'm Little Miss Wakegan. Thank you.
Jane, are we taking, yes, I'm getting directions. We're gonna, ladies, you're gonna come up.
I was gonna say thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Come on over, ladies.
Picture time.
All right, we gotta shift over so we get to Wakegan. But before we take this picture, as I said earlier in my office, to these young ladies who are here, we want to, you know, oftentimes, we do not give our young ladies and our young men the accolades that we want, encouragement. And it's oftentimes, we almost do that to negative, what happened goes on our young ladies, young ladies who make some bad decisions. These young ladies have made some awesome decisions. They've given up their time. They're committed. These are the future leaders of our community. And I said to them, thank you for doing what you're doing. More importantly, you are representing Wakegan, Illinois, and that is an honor. So thank you very much for doing a fantastic job, and definitely you. All right, here we go.
Hey, we're all looking right here, smiling. Give your parents a minute.
All right, thank you, ladies. Out one incoming. Thank you very much. Public works, Alderman Newsom.
Okay. Uh, we got one more.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. One more. Library. All right. Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Taylor, to write about the appointment to the Wakegan Library Board. Jeanne Tarrat Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins, where are you at? Stand up, young lady. Any questions to the motion? Roll call. And the roll call is just a, roll call, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much for giving up your time and your energy. You're here at just about every council meeting with your husband, and now... Who was that? All right, somebody's excited for you. This has, this has been one of those council meetings. Well, as I was saying, you have been here with your husband at every council meeting. Thank you for serving on this board. We know you'll do a fantastic job representing our community. We know you'll do a fantastic job representing our community. Take care, God bless. Alright, reports and communication, they're being done. Item six, Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve a good faith waiver per Section 42-458 subsection I 7 for the purchase of a used 2014 P385B HTC asphalt paver for Public Works from Pattern Industries CAT for an amount not to exceed $59,000. This purchase will be charged to line item 307-1307-26362 and funded from the City of Waukegan 2018B GO bonds and I so move.
A motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Seager. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve the purchase of a 2018 262 DHF Skid steer loader for Public Works from Pattern Industries CAT for an amount not to exceed $87,000 for Section 42-458 subsection I 3 joint purchasing program through Sourcewell/NJPA. This purchase will be charged to line item 307-1307-26362 and funded from the City of Waukegan 2018B GO bonds and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C was pulled until next council meeting. We're gonna have to switch out one of those items. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Pure Technologies for an amount not to exceed $86,000 per Section 42-458 subsection I 1 sole source. This contract will use a modern camera technology to assess the condition of a certain 12 and 16-inch water mains. Funds will be charged to line item 555-91602-7043 and funded from the City of Waukegan 2018 C GO bonds and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the lowest responsible bid for the 2018 sidewalk program to DeLand Construction of Algonquin, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $1,749,707. Funds will be charged to line item 307-1307-27636 and funded from the City of Waukegan 2018 B GO bonds and I so move. And I would also like to add that DeLand is ready to honor the 30% local hiring ordinance as well. We went in length with this item because we are taking the lowest responsible bid and not the lowest bidder.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman. Tempest, any questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor.
The lowest bid now says that, for those in the audience who don't know what happened during committee, the lowest bid is about a $200,000 difference. And we've apparently had issues with them in the past, so we did not take the lowest bid on this. I guess one question, and I don't know if they're still here, is would they be willing to put up money to, if they, if they didn't complete the job? Is that something we consider? Or do we just not want to consider that at all and just go with the most responsible bid? I don't, I don't even know that they're here to respond to that.
Well, it's performance bonds typically.
Yeah.
Performance bonds is a requirement. That's a requirement from, so...
Okay.
Yeah, that's, no, that's a requirement. Yeah, performance bonds typically over a certain dollar amount. So even if a person does not, we can go back to...
But I think people need to know that we've had problems before.
Yeah, there has been question before and also the references that the lowest qualified bidder presented, those references all had the same problem with this company not being able to stay the course of the job, I guess disappearing at certain times and not finishing the project on time. So at this late stage, I don't think we should use a company that is in question and may not finish the job before the fall. And I so move.
Please, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman. Tempest, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
And that is it, Your Honor.
Okay. Judiciary, Alderman May.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is the Judiciary Committee and I so recommends to approve the draft ordinance granting the Class E liquor license request for Masayo Mexican Grill at 554 North Green Bay Road and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozzio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item, the Judiciary Committee recommends approval of the attached draft ordinance granting a Class E liquor license to Lucky Bernie's 3035 North Oak Grove Avenue, Suite 1, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman. Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Ma'am, I had some questions during the committee on Lucky Bernie's, but the owner and I did meet after the committee meeting, and I'm satisfied now, so I will vote a yea.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C was held over, held over in committee. It actually was just a discussion item this evening. Item D, motion to approve a resolution encouraging the use of administrative adjudication as an alternative to filing ordinance violation tickets in the courts of the 19th Judicial Circuit, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Next item E is a motion to approve an ordinance correcting a Scrivner's error, and this was just a error that was overlooked in the water rates when we changed the water rates earlier this year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance reducing late fees for rental and business licenses. Our current structure was charging a 50% late fee after 30 days on a business license, which we are reducing to 10%, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye. The next two items, G and H, were motions to deny coming out of committee, but upon request, I am going to hold those over until the next city council meeting.
Item I, I'm sorry, item I.
It was G and H, correct?
Yes, G and H.
Okay, next item, item I, is a motion to approve zoning calendar number 2562, a map amendment from R3 Single Family Residence to B3 General Commercial for 10 and 14 North Frolic Avenue. This is, the next three items are for a major project, development project at the corner of Washington and Green Bay for a Circle K gas station and Convenience Mart, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozzio. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to approve zoning calendar number 2563, conditional use permit for an automotive service station at 1 North Green Bay Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman. Tempest, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Next item is motion to approve zoning calendar V-2-18, which is a vacation of an alley west of Frolic Avenue and north of Washington Street. And this is the final piece that will put their parcels all together, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
How much money are we getting for that?
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
We're getting the fair market value, Alderman, the fair market value. Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Maybe fair market value, but they needed it real bad.
We need it too.
I'll go along, aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Real quick, I just, I want to bring you what I said in committee if I could. This is a huge improvement on that corner. We have an old Waukegan tire shop there. Mr. Nierheim does not need three shops within a mile of each other. He said that, so he has taken that land and parcel it to the Circle K. Now you're gonna have a corner that is gonna generate far more value for the city, far more value. We need 50 more of these developments in the city of Waukegan. We have to have land that increases its value. Vacant land sitting there is almost of no value. This is just like what happened with Thornton's on Green Bay and Grand Avenue. That has increased the value of that land that you can't believe. This is gonna do the same thing there. So when people keep asking us about the tax rate and property taxes, the only way that we can get the tax rate down is to increase value of land. This is one way to do it. So we need more of these. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, and if I may add, one, I have, I was given a picture of that location back in the 40s.
I remember that.
I have a copy of it in my office, and I meant to have it tonight to show everyone, but I'm gonna display it to Alderman Mozzio's point. I'm gonna add to Alderman Mozzio's point that I think it took us, Noel, about how long? About a good eight, eight, nine months to really put it all, to be able to put it all together?
A little longer than that.
Okay, a little longer than that. So it goes back to how long it really takes to put nice, solid deals together where it's a win-win for the city, the, obviously, the developer, and ultimately, the ultimate end users are you. That corner will be a new life in roughly a good year. And for myself and others, you know, we're, sometimes we get used to seeing that same old face.
Raggedy corner.
Alderman Mozzio said that, not I.
We got plenty of raggedy corners, we know.
Well, I mean, and you know what? To own it, you need to own something before you can understand something.
Right.
That corner, it is needed, it's need a facelift. I was one, used to go to Dairy Queen, remember the Dairy, those? I'm not the only one in here now. Dairy Queen, that was the Dairy Queen to go to.
Yep.
But that Dairy Queen has been out of business.
Ten years.
Twenty years. I, for one, am still looking for Dairy Queen to come back. It's not coming back. Circle K and what they're gonna bring, not only to that, but that in corner, and what I really especially like about that, Alderman May, there is a neighbor who's been living on, in that next door to the Frolic, was it?
Frolic.
Frolic. And they wanted to get her approval first. That's class to me. They wanted her to say, is this okay? That's someone who's looking out for everybody's interest. And it's difficult sometimes to do that, but I thought that was really, really classed, and I think that neighbor deserves a Waukegan proud award for her giving us her blessing. Fifty years, I think she's been sitting there, living there. Yeah, that's good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Alderman.
You know, I just want to make one more comment about the project, and it's a, my hats off to the staff at the City of Waukegan upstairs at the planning and zoning, because they stuck to their guns on some of the zoning issues, like monument signs, so we're not having big pole signs. You know, it's just gonna be the classy design, the very meticulous, you know, let's get the landscaping inside the curb, not outside the curb. I mean, just, and, and kudos to the developer and the architect for agreeing and making those changes. I mean, fenestration on Washington Street, I could go on and on, but I just, my kudos off to everyone involved in this deal, because, you know, City of Waukegan held their standards high, and the developer and the architect stepped up and made those changes to achieve these higher standards. So this is a really, I'm really proud of this work that everyone did, so congratulations to everyone.
Ditto.
And my last item was also held over, conditional use for a daycare center till the next Judiciary Committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mozzio, Public Safety Committee.
If anybody would like to leave right now, they, go ahead and do that. I'll let you exit before we start this. Ladies, thank you for coming.
Thank you, ladies, take care. Good night, ladies. Take care.
Thank you for coming.
See you on my next trip to Haliisport. Thank you. Thank you. You take care. Congratulations. We should've said, who all wanna stay? Alright, we'll get back to business here. Public Safety Meeting, we ready? Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt this, present an ordinance
ordinance for a handicapped parking space at eleven ten Yoma Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second second by Alderman Newsome, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt as presented ordinance for a handicapped parking space at five one three Lincoln Avenue, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Velco, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Uh, item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt an ordinance to present as presented ordinance for parking restrictions on Apple Avenue, parking prohibited at all times on specific streets, Apple Avenue, both sides, oh boy, here we go with that, both sides of the street from Green Bay Road to Dilger Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Taylor, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase one two thousand nineteen Ford F five fifty Anulot at the cooperative bid price, as permitted by City Code, check in two, article four, division two, section two, dash four, five, eight, I, for a total not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and one dollars from Foster Coach Sales, Inc., Portland Emergency Vehicles in Sterling, Illinois, Cooperative Bid Number one seventy-four. Funds for this contract are available using bond proceeds for the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and one dollars from line item three oh seven, one thirty, seven two six, three sixty, funded from the City of Waukegan, two hundred, two thousand eighteen B G O bonds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award a contract to Sea Grave LLC via the H GAC Cooperative Purchasing Program, a local governmental procurement service, for the purchase of one Sea Grave model TB fifty CA Marauder Custom fifteen hundred GPM pumper for an amount not to exceed five hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and four dollars. Funds for the contract are available using bond proceeds for the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and four dollars from line item three oh seven, one thirty, seven two six, three sixty, funded from the City of Waukegan, two thousand and eighteen B G O bonds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Velco, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase three two thousand eighteen Ford Explorers with a total price not to exceed eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and one Ford Fusion with a total price not to exceed seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Both purchases made through the suburban purchasing cooperative contracts, number, excuse me, one sixty and one sixty-four. Payment for the vehicles will be made from line item one hundred, six oh seven, five two six, four nine three, and six sixty, one sixty-nine, eight two six, four ninety-three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Seager, any question to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And item G is motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt as presented ordinance, amending prohibitive parking on Brookside Avenue. This is after much work with the police department's traffic division, Lieutenant Beach, and everyone, and also the staff at Brookside Campus to try to mitigate some of the traffic problems that we have over there, like we have at every other school in Waukegan. We all know that. So, um, did we get that, did you get the language?
Yeah, we actually looked at the, uh, at the existing code, and it actually covers this issue already, so this is something that, uh, we just need to educate our patrolmen out on the streets a little bit better about what the situation is, but we're not going to need this ordinance after all.
We're not?
Nope.
Oh, we don't need it at all?
We've got it, we're covered.
Oh, so we just, it's a, it's a?
Done deal.
Moot point?
Yep, the chief and I agree that the, the current ordinance is more than adequate for this.
We just haven't been educating people well enough.
Apparently, we haven't been shooing people off the street when, the way, the way we're allowed to.
Oh, okay, well, that's good, because Brookside Avenue, anybody who goes there during school time knows it's a catastrophe, and it's, it is what it is, it's, my analogy is people get tired of it, it's you're trying to put fifty pounds potatoes in a twenty-five pound sack, it just doesn't fit, and that's every school in Waukegan, that's just not Waukegan, the Brookside Campus. All the schools were built a hundred years ago when everybody walked to school, now everybody drives, and when they build a new school somewhere, where do they build it? Out in the middle of nowhere, when they got plenty of parking, but we don't have that luxury, so, but okay, we'll never forget that, move on to the next one, right?
Yep.
And that would be, okay, uh, H, motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt as presented ordinance for a special curfew, and we covered that when the mayor is coming, so I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Seager, any other questions to the motion? I'm going to go on a limb on this one, this would be a unanimous one.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Don't mess me up, Bill.
Alderman Taylor.
Thinking about it, aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And that is it, Your Honor, thank you very much.
All right, everybody, that's a, that, that goes down in history. Thank you, everybody, I think this is certainly going to, this particular curfew is certainly going to, not only send a message that we, we have family events, and we want family events at our, in all of our outdoor, uh, festivals or events like that, but, uh, our young men and young ladies, it sent another message to them that there's a certain time you need to be at home.
That's right.
And that's just, you know, that's just where we're at, I mean, that's a little old school, but I think it's some, it's some old school that's needed nowadays.
We need some old school.
Need some old school.
Amen.
At home, maybe, but not here? I know that's right. Alderman Taylor, can you please take liberal relations committee, please?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item A, motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash O dash, an amendment to ordinance dash eighteen dash zero dash fifty-five, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the City of Waukegan, Illinois, effective August sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Please note this amendment to the ordinance is to remove the fire department master mechanic position title from tier six based on the I L R B decision. And do you want me to read the case number?
No.
Okay.
All right, motion by Alderman Taylor, uh, second, uh, by, uh, Alderman Tempest. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, motion to spread up record the decision of the I L R B, I'll skip the case number, on the joint petition of the city and the I U O E Local one fifty to bring the fire department master mechanic position title within the Local one fifty bargaining group and authorize setting the wage for such position on the said bargaining unit scale.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Velco, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C, motion to retain Gov. H R USA pursuit into their proposal to assist city staff in advertising, vetting, and recommending candidates for the position of full-time water plant superintendent, superintendent. Funds for the recruitment will come from line item five five five, nine one five, five two, four four, three eight, with costs not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Motion by Alderman Mo, I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor, uh, second by Alderman Newsome, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item ten, no old business. Item eleven. Motion, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, motion to approve the attached exhibit A, short-term lease of the Urban Edge Art Space with the Waukegan Arts Council for installation and showing of an exhibit of quotes, uh, from the migrant quilt project. The lease will run from September tenth, twenty eighteen, to November twenty-first, twenty eighteen. All fees will be waived in exchange for council sponsorship of the unique cultural event. Any other questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion?
What does that exactly mean, sir?
They're going to show quotes.
What I'm speaking about is the last sentence, Mayor, all fees will be waived in exchange for the council's sponsorship, is that, are we waiving fees because?
The Arts.
All right, okay, I'm sorry, I took that as art.
No, I'm sorry.
That's what I took it for. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, it's, we're doing, I think this is, this is like the second year we've, this is the second year in a row we've did this, Jane?
Third.
Third, third year in a row? Any other questions? Roll call please, thank you. Alderman Velco.
You got me.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve and the payment stated August sixth, twenty eighteen, in total amount of one million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve regular payroll dated July twentieth, twenty eighteen, in a total amount of one million five hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, item D, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Seager, correction, Alderman Bolton, um, to approve regular payroll dated August thirtieth, twenty eighteen, in total amount of one million five hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item E, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve final, uh, approve elected officials monthly expense account payroll dated July twentieth, twenty eighteen, in total amount of six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item F, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to approve final cash out for names listed on the agenda payroll dated July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, in a total amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item G, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Mozzio, to approve Local One Fifty Comp Time Cash Out Payroll dated July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, in a total amount of one thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Any other question, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item H, motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve final cash out, name listed on the agenda, payroll dated August third, two thousand and eighteen, in total amount of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, checked, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve Local One Fifty Comp Time Cash Out Payroll dated Aug, payroll dated August third, two thousand and eighteen, in total amount of three hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, bless you, to approve all.
Block party.
Raffle sale.
Block, I'm sorry, I was lost, I'm sorry. So raffle sales application. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item K, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco, to approve all block party applications. Any questions to the motion? All those approve?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item twelve, there being none. Item thirteen, closing items. Alderman, it's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you. Just a couple items tonight, both with the airport. August twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, we have the honor of having a B seventeen Flying Fortress coming into Waukegan National Airport. Once-in-a-lifetime thing, this, from World War II, there's only a few remaining out there since World War II. Your chance to see a sixty-five thousand pound B seventeen, quote, named the Flying Fortress come in. If you want to take a flight, it's expensive, about four hundred and fifty dollars to take a flight, be a passenger. If you want to take a ground tour, it's only ten dollars. If you're a veteran or active military, it's free. Also, the airshow is coming September eighth at Waukegan Airport. The gates are going to be open at nine-thirty, they close at five o'clock. The airshow starts at noon and ends about three o'clock. This year, they're also going to have helicopter rides starting at nine-thirty in the morning till five o'clock in the afternoon at forty dollars per seat. If you need any further information, obviously, waukegan national airport dot com and you'll get all your information there. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor.
Just a couple quick things. First, I want to say what a great event Touch a Truck was and I want to thank all of our staff who participated in it. Let me tell you, the level of professionalism and the fun that the kids were shown, I, I just, on behalf of the city, I just want to say thank you. Second, for those Aldermen who are wondering what your red little bags are, our target, our local target, their CBS Pharmacy is offering a program for any businesses who have more than twenty-four people who would like to receive flu shots, they will do onsite clinics. So if you're interested, you can get in touch with them. I've given you their business card so you can talk to them. Last, I'd like to talk a little bit about landlords stepping it up in our community. I've seen some properties lately that, quite honestly, it's shameful to even admit that they're in our community. We need to step it up, make sure that these homes do not have electrical, mold issues, stairs that work. These are, these homes need to be worked on and if you are a landlord in our community, we expect you to meet those minimum standards and make sure that these residents are safe for our citizens. So I just want to put that out. Like I said, I think that we haven't, the landlords aren't doing enough on their properties, cutting their dead trees, et cetera, et cetera. But please, if you want to be part of our community, step it up. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to send, first of all, condolences to the Cunningham family for losing their loved one. Mike sent my condolences. And then I want to acknowledge, God bless you, I wanted to acknowledge those that, saying good job, to those that had their black party in the first ward, Jesus' name, and the one on George and Sunday, good job.
Alderman Seager.
Just a few words. Tonight, I was, I was really impressed with how full the council chambers were and how well-dressed these young ladies were, and I didn't get a chance to, to thank them, they looked gorgeous. But thank all of you for being here tonight and I urge you all to, to try and come out and give us your input on what's going out, going on throughout all the wards, all nine. And I, I want to thank Alderman Taylor for bringing that up about the landlords and these rental properties. They do have to step up to the base. They have to. We're making improvements throughout the city and why can't they? Take care of your, your investments and thank you all very much for being here with us tonight. Thank you all.
Alderman Mozzio.
Pass.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Tempest to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming.